In progress.
Check, mic check, check one.
Welcome.
Nice to see you all.
Welcome David. Blake, are we ready on Zoom land?
Yeah, we're all good to go on Zoom.
So I guess Wendy.
Yeah, she's working.
Yes, we're all good on Zoom land here. If we get somebody to maybe do a quick test on Zoom.
I can someone on Zoom attest that they can hear us. All right. Thank you so much, Stacy. Appreciate it. All right. We'll now call the meeting of the Dunsmere City Council to order for January 5th, 2023. We could all rise with flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready for roll, ready for roll call, Mayor Brian?
Yes, thank you, Wendy.
Councilmember Clarnow.
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Councilmember Luke Casey.
Here.
Mayor Brian.
Present. Right, tonight, we have no special presentations or announcements. So we're going to move into our general public comments for this evening. This is a time for any member of the public to come and address the council, not individuals, but the council as a whole, preferably, on items related to the city that are not specifically addressed in the agenda later. So that is say anything generally or anything that's on our consent agenda, which today is the check registry from December 3rd through December 30th and the 2023 report of waste discharge. So if anyone has anything to comment on the consent agenda or generally, please either come to the podium or if you're in Zoom, raise your hand. I'll deal with the room participants first. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll be allotted three minutes. Our finance director, Blake Michelson, will give you a 30 second warning when you're close to the end.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Holt, 6235 Hill Street. Three years ago, the city council took the bold step of passing an abandoned and distressed real property ordinance, model on one adopted by Weed, an ordinance which essentially said that the city of Dunsmere was going to play an active role in encouraging property owners to fix up their buildings so that they are rentable or receivable. To that end, the ordinance requires, quote, "The owner of any abandoned or distressed commercial property to provide access to the city to conduct an exterior and interior inspection of the building to determine compliance with the municipal code," unquote. My understanding is that after three years, there are at least two downtown commercial properties where the city has not been able to carry out the required inspections due to resistance in some form or other from the property owners. The owners of the former law office that's been vacant for decades and the California Theater. I know there are some who say that this city and this council will not be able to enforce its own ordinance, thereby sending the wrong message both to these two property owners and to those property owners who maintain their properties in good condition but have seen their property values depressed by poorly maintained properties nearby. Personally, I'm taking a wait and see attitude. We have at least one new council member now who may be able to help us move things in a forward direction. So there may be some hope for the future. Stay tuned. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holt. Anyone else in the room would like to make public comments? Please come to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Peter Art, members of the public. Peter Art, 5859 Sacramento Avenue. I had the good fortune last month on the 17th to attend a housing workshop held by the Dunsmere Planning Commission with the support of a consultant group. And I was the only member of the public there. There were no members in the city council there. But it was an excellent hour long workshop devoted to the housing element in Dunsmere's general plan and how is Dunsmere going to provide affordable housing. And my takeaway, what we all know is you're not going to find a new subdivision at Dunsmere. There's very few buildable lots. If you build a house, nobody could afford it. But what we did find out is there's over 300 vacant residential units in the city of Dunsmere. Over 300. And that's sort of to support what Tim is saying, the low hanging fruit. So as you organize yourself for 2023, I hope whoever you choose as mayor and vice mayor will work closely with the planning commission, the president or the chairman, Craig Kay, council member Chrissy Thelmore, who is one of the historic district delegates, to actually set goals. There's people that can't afford to live here that want to live here. There's the service industry, whether you're a renter or an owner, and the workshop gives you the demographics by age, by income, by housing stock. If the city can actually work together, to deal with affordable housing and provide it for citizens, that will be a notable achievement for this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Art. Seeing no further, okay, one more public comments from the room.
David Nixon, 5630 Dunsmere Avenue. Hi, Mr. Kenny. Very nice to see you and Mr. Reeve. I'd like to say hello to you for the first time.
Hi, nice to meet you.
This is just to alert the council of a safety issue.
Could you state your name and address?
I did.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And I also wore my seatbelt. I just wanted to mention that the sidewalk in front of my property is owned by the city. Had a new piece of sidewalk put in. I don't know, five years ago or something. And they didn't tie the new sidewalk to the old sidewalk, which would have been appropriate. And so the tree roots have lifted up the sidewalk about that much. And so I've seen people stumble on it. I hope no one falls. And Brian Wilson did a fine job one time of coming out and replacing part of that with some stones or what do you call them stepping stone things with sand. And I, some more of that is needed. And so I just thought I'd ask Mr. Reeve. He might take a look at it on Sunday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. All right. Any further public comments in the room? Please come to the podium.
My name is Karen Kaisler, and I would prefer not to say where I reside.
That's optional. You may proceed.
I am standing to offer my public input regarding the reorganization of leadership of the coming year. As you're aware of the events that unfolded last year between myself and Dave Kaisler, I was hoping it would remain out of the spotlight at the pub, in the public. It became a toxic shaming game led by Vice Mayor Bruce Deutsch, who took it upon himself to redeem and renew Dave's image using his title and influence, which I believe is not to the pub, to the public's best interest and not business of the city of Dunsmere. I am asking two items to be considered during this, this item of business. Both Dave Kaiser and Bruce Deutsch not to not be considered as candidates for the mayor.
Excuse me.
Merrow.
The mayoral candidates will be considered later.
Okay.
So with this specific public comment, you're welcome to stay around. We will be addressing that issue later.
Okay.
If you have any item that doesn't specifically address who should serve as mayor or vice mayor, now's the time to talk about that.
Now is time?
No, for mayor and vice mayor, we're considering that later in the.
Right, in four.
For anything that's generally related to the city, not specific to that topic, you should make a public comment now.
So if you had a comment on items not on the agenda, this is the time for that.
This is, this is.
Okay, so I have my statement that I'd like to read.
Is it, is it about the mayoral appointments?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so then I would recommend you wait.
You wait till the mayor and vice mayor topics should be coming up here. It'll be new business.
Item 11B.
11B, thank you.
Oh, then I can.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. It's just we have a order and things on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
And I would also remind all councillors, we're not going to respond specifically to public comment as it is also not on the agenda. So if anyone else has any general public comments for this evening, please come up to the podium. And if there's nobody else in the room, I'll turn to Zoom. Please raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment. Seeing none, I will close general public comment for this evening. We'll move forward to staff and council comments. I'd like to start with city manager.
Mayor and council and public, thank you for the attendance. It's the largest attendance since I've been here. So, you know, I know it's not for myself, but I appreciate it. So over the last, last month, I guess it's, it's been approximately a month since we had our last meeting. We've had a lot of challenges, most recently today and yesterday regarding stormwater. So if you see any stormwater plugups or anything like that, the guys have been out all day and it's been, it's been tough. And I thank Brian and, and Ben and all the other guys for handling that. But we, we need to make sure that we're able to get the stormwater drains clear. So if you see any issues, please, please let us know. Snow removal, we've had some challenges with parking and those kind of things. Please, please, please move your vehicles during snow events. They're just talking that we may have elevation changes in the snow. So depending on how far down those come, it could get pretty nasty. And then also wastewater plant. Today, we have gone back to the river for the first time in almost three years. So we are taking in excess amount of water through INI issues for wastewater. And so we have gone back to the river as of today at about 12:50 PM. And then as far as that, that's most of what I have.
The question I got is, is this something that has happened in the past or we've had this and it just hasn't happened in three or four years? So we have a process and everything involved with it.
For the, for the wastewater?
Yeah.
Yes, so we have not had, obviously with the drought, we haven't had as much rain in the capacity. And so I went down there with Blake today and we were taking in basically right around a million gallons a day. And we had been averaging around 150 to 200,000. And so we were just using our ponds and they would evaporate off and we haven't had any issues. But that's what the plant's designed for, is designed to go to the river when the flows are high enough and they are now high enough. And so we are outputting about as much as we're taking in as fast as we can treat it.
Okay, thank you for that report. I know it was an important issue when we raised the rates in the sewage planet.
Yeah, and there's still many improvements to come because.
A lot of money to get to where we are now.
Yeah, for sure. And that's, that's some of the planning stuff that we have in the processes to help with that INI because we shouldn't be taking in more water on the days it rains. I mean, the idea is to only take in sewage, but obviously there's a groundwater issue. And so that's a part of our challenges we're dealing with right now.
Cool. Any additional questions for city manager? Thank you so much. Police Chief Sergeant Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. New Year's Eve was busy in town. Fortunately, we only had two arrests for misdemeanor public intoxication. Other than that, the restaurants and businesses were thriving and it seemed like there's a lot of people out having a good time. Other than that, I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for keeping our streets safe. Any questions of Sergeant Ortiz? Blake, do you have anything? Staff comments? Let's proceed to councilman comments, Councilman Kaisler.
Yeah, first thing I'd like to say is kudos to Brian and his crew. Those guys have been doing an outstanding job. Today I seen him, he looked like a soaker wet rat. He just, and he'd been in there cleaning the sewers and stuff. So kudos to his crew. And you're right, they've been, they've been doing a really good job. So we all know that the hardware store sold and Ron's retirement party is at Pops on the 14th from 5:00 to 7:00. The doors are open at 4:30. It costs 15 bucks in advance and tickets go on sale tomorrow at the hardware store. It's 20 bucks at the door. It's going to be really good food by our own lunchbox diners. Dinner's in in a no host bar. So everybody cordially invite you to come out and say thank you to Ron for, I don't know, he's been here very, very, very long time, my understanding. So I appreciate him and I guess that's about all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Kaisler.
This is my first regular meeting, so I'd like to just say I'm excited to be here representing the community. As everyone knows, it's raining really hard. We've been going through a lot of weather. Very different than anything we've experienced the last couple of years. I haven't seen anything like this in four or five years. It's going to keep raining, so we need to be very cautious. About the flooding down South First Street and yeah, I'm just happy to be here.
Councilman Kaisler.
Yes, I have a little statement to read here. I want to apologize to the people of Dunsmere for the inappropriate interaction they had on Facebook recently. My interactions on Facebook began as my honoring a promise to a dear friend or right or wrong and ended up making everything worse. I learned there are wrongs that can't be made right. So to the people of Dunsmere and especially those who voted for me in 16 and 20, I'm very sorry and I apologize. With that said, and with the new year ahead, I want all the citizens of Dunsmere to know that I am more determined than ever to give my all to make Dunsmere even better. I have forward endeavors that I want to be focusing on. First of all, last year, the council submitted to the local transportation commission a document calling for the creation of an entirely new county bus system that meet all of the needs of the people of Dunsmere and the county. I am one of the six commissioners on the LTC with three members coming from the board of supervisors and three city council members. I have been a commissioner for four years and am scheduled to rotate into the position of vice chair for the commission. I look forward to using that position to make the dream of a new bus system for the county in Dunsmere a reality. I'm also a member of the League of California Sacramento Division. On one hand, I was just elected treasurer of that division. On the other, I'm beginning to initiate an initiative in conjunction with the governor's office to explore a new way of funneling grant money to rural cities. Closer to home, I will continue the effort I have gained when I first got to the council to bring the airport back to life. We now have a brand new runway paid for with a $3 million no match grant. Next is to find the best use of the 70 plus acreage to the east of the airport. Building Dunsmere's future was a project that I was trying to kick off the ground. It was based on an effort by Aetna called Building Aetna's Future. And that was an effort where they brought together after months of preparation, all the citizens of the town to kind of get together and figure out what they wanted for the city. That was part of an effort that I wanted to get involved with in 2020, but then COVID came along. The following year, I tried to COVID spare it down to make it a volunteer effort. So what I'm looking forward to now is reaching back out to the Siskiess Revitalization Network, the Ford Family Institute, and trying to come up with by the end of April, a Building Dunsmere's Future event based on what they did in Aetna. And I was there for it. It was really beautiful. Finally, I want to find a way to create a hybrid form of newspaper. I definitely recognize the lack of any newspaper to get word out to all various people. I want to try and use my technological abilities to find a way to get it in whatever form that individual, that citizen could use, et cetera. So those are the goals I have looking forward. And as I said, I apologize for my mistakes on Facebook.
Thank you, Councilman Deutsch.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I want to kind of reiterate some of the points. It's very hard not to say councilmember Art, but member of the public Art brought up a really good point. So the city of Dunsmere is in its cycle six housing element, which is the main long-term guiding document for housing in the city of Dunsmere. And that is ongoing right now. There is an open survey for getting people's input on what they believe are the housing issues in the city of Dunsmere. And so I really strongly suggest everyone look at our website is available in both English and in Spanish. Also, if you need help finding that, you can feel free to email me. I am going to try and work with, I sent Wendy an email with, I believe, Dustin CC about working on putting together advertisements for that to try and get as many participants as possible. The contractor Plan West has prepared the Wyrica housing element, but they've also are preparing the Mount Shasta, Aetna, Doris, Tulley Lake elements as well as ours. And I kind of want to beat them in the number of people who take our survey because I'm competitive and I want that. And I want to hear from you and what your opinion is on housing in the city of Dunsmere. The other thing too that I'm working on is there's a meeting for the library at 11:00 AM this Saturday, and they're going to be discussing future library services. This is something I attended their board meeting a while ago and this kind of got put on the back burner. Just discussing the future of the library, what kind of services it should be offered and looking for grants to support the services and possibly the upkeep of the building that they're in. You know, because it is a city-owned building and working through those processes. The other thing too is to bring up with the sidewalk comment is we also are conducting a transportation study right now and we have contractors from Civic Well. They used to be the a different nonprofit that worked with the state, but Civic Well is assisting us with the transportation study. And we did do a walkthrough workshop with just the advisory group prior to the holidays and prior to all the snow and rain. So it was a lot nicer than it would be now, but we are going to be putting out information for public input on transportation related issues in the city, which can include transit, active transportation, which is biking, walking, scooting, rolling, things like that. And so I hope everyone stays tuned for that and participates in our transportation study. And as I said before, also takes the housing survey, which is available on our city website in both English and in Spanish. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Casey.
It's also in the chat.
Ah, thank you. The housing survey is in the chat. You should take it now.
Take it right now.
Right now.
We should provide paper copies at every council meeting.
My understanding is we have to beat 294. Only 294 people in Mount Shasta took the survey and we can, we can beat that. We can beat that.
I've got 295 like that.
There you go. We can do that.
All right, thank you, everyone. Happy New Year. Similar to Councilman Kaisler, I'm very excited about the transfer of the Dunsmere Hardware Store. It's been a business since the 1880s. I had the opportunity to meet Jake, one of the new principal owners. He did seem open to coming to council to introduce himself. Perhaps our town historian can give us an account of the hardware store through the decades. But I encourage everyone to support Ron on 14th. Some exciting news. I had the opportunity to have a sit down with the principal owner of the Travelers Hotel and discuss their project. And I'm helping them try to secure financing to get this up and running. And it may be hopeful, but they could potentially complete this project in two years' time. You know, we'll see how it goes, but there's definitely a big push on their end to look at this and cross the finish line. I know we've been waiting for a very, very long time, but I hope we'll have good news on that front in the next six months.
Question on that. Have they given you an idea? Is it still the funding they're looking for? Is that still the holdup or is there something else involved?
Well, I'm not going to discuss their affairs, but you know, it's putting the whole package together to be able to move forward at a quick pace.
Got it. Thanks.
Is the case, but happy to fill you in more.
Yeah, I understand.
Given their permissions.
Yep.
So let's move into the committee reports. Being the holidays, I would not find it a miss if committees did not I will dispense with that item.
Well, I do have one thing I was realizing while we were talking about the rain, and that is that if you remember a couple of months ago, based on the DPAC request, there was information that went out on flooding and it might be useful to let people on social media know to go back if they still have it or to put it out again. And then also in terms of bringing this up as a committee, I'm wondering if the DPAC might want to find if there's any way they would like to, I understand you'd like, you're on the committee as it is, maybe we can find out if they want to get involved in anything helping the city with their, what they've learned over the time. Is that reasonable?
Well, one thing, I'm not on DPAC anymore. Unfortunately, I couldn't be on DPAC with being on city council.
Yeah.
But I'm in complete support of.
Okay, I'll reach out to them.
Mr. Mayor, on that note, I want to take advantage that we, we have sandbags available for people.
Correct. Yeah, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
We need to be waking people up right now to what's going on.
Anyway, I appreciate the input. If you could announce the sandbags, but let's proceed with the meeting. We have DPAC on later in the agenda, as you guys noticed. So we'll discuss that committee there.
Yeah, so we did, I forgot about that. That was mentioned to me in the flurry of busyness this afternoon. But we do have sandbags available for all the public down at the Public Works Building. And they're welcome to go and get them as they need them.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for getting that done.
So proceeding to item seven, approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of December 15th, 2022.
Second.
I'd make a note that the date is incorrect. It should be the seventh, seventh, right?
Seventh, yeah.
Should be December 7th.
December 7th?
7th, not 15th.
Okay.
Or eighth?
I think it's the eighth. I make a motion as a minute.
One second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion ahead? See none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. All right, let's move into the consent agenda for this evening. I may, we have check registry from December 3rd through December 30th. We have the 2023 report of waste discharge. It's a report we submit to the state.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion of the motion ahead? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it turns out the date is the eighth. So we probably.
Let the record reflect.
Let the record reflect, yeah.
Thank you. We have no public hearing tonight. Let's move this into our old business from the last meeting. Councilman Kaisler is gracious enough to introduce at that time the electric vehicle charging stations amendment to Title 15.
And contract planner Rico Tinsman requested that I close her out too. All right, so on page 16 of the city council agenda packet is the staff report from, as I said before, Rico Tinsman, who's our contract planner who prepared this. So this is the second reading of ordinance 574, adding chapter 15.56, electric vehicle charging stations to Title 15, buildings in construction of the Dunsmere Municipal Code to create an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. And the project also includes the adoption of a electric vehicle charging station checklist pursuant to Assembly Bill 1236 and ordinance 574. So this is coming to the city council for a second time. It was reviewed at our last meeting. And what this is, is it's codifying in our local municipal code, an expedited review of electric vehicle charging stations based off of new state law. So new state law is requiring that cities adopt a process to process charging station building permits within a 30 day time window. If you do not have adopted processes in place, that window goes down from 30 days down to, I believe, only five or six days. And so to ensure that these are being put in and designed properly as to not cause electrical fires or any other issues with the building itself, we have adopted the 30, or we are proposing to adopt the 30 day review period and not the five. So how that works is if someone were to bring in a building permit tomorrow and they want to put in an electric vehicle charging station in their home, we would have. we would have only five days to review that because this law went into effect at the beginning of this calendar year. That's a very, very quick turnaround for us to do plan check and make sure that it's being designed and engineered to a level that is safe. And so the suggested motions are on page 17, beginning with number one. And I'll just kind of open it up for comments from here. Or questions.
Questions.
And comments.
If I could, I'd like to add one other thing here because it just came up here. And that is that Charles Anderson, who's the person from League of California Cities, reached out to me because I have a Tesla and said, we have a opening for a conference for rural cities electric charging stations. And they wanted to know if we might be interested, or somebody here in the region might be interested in hosting that. So I just wanted to put that on the agenda. Maybe we could look at that later, but it does tie into the EV world there.
Do we have any charging stations?
Yeah.
Any additional questions or comments from council? See none. I will open this up for public comment. Please come up to the podium and as before, state your name. You'll be allowed three minutes.
Still Peter Arth. And it's my great hope when Bryce Craig was mayor of the city of Dun spear. Bryce and I worked closely to try to get Tesla to put a charging station in Dun smear. And in the end, because we had no support from our local utility, we lost out to the city of Mount Shasta. But I hope the city of Dun smear treats this as an opportunity. If you look five years out, I5 is going to be the electric highway. That's the aspirations of the state of California to be an international leader in electric vehicles. As Councilmember Deutsch talks about upgrading local transportation, it could be electric buses. It could be smaller vehicles, but it's only going to happen if Dun smear starts planning for the future for parking areas, convenient charging stations. It's a huge opportunity as we rebuild our economy, but it's only going to happen if you all in the planning commission take the initiative. There's more money out there than you can imagine if you take the initiative. Thank you.
You to start. Any additional public comment? On Zoom, please hit the raise your hand button if you'd like to make a comment on the electric charging station ordinance amendment. See none. I'll close this public hearing for tonight. See the discussion.
I would just like to quickly add, I did not read through the environmental recommendation, but the proposed amendments are eligible for a general rule exemption, which is section 15061b3 of the SEQA guidelines. And so this would be exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Is that a motion to examine? Will you want to move it? I'm ready if you don't.
Figure out that Mr. Tesla take it.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 574, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Dun smear, adding Chapter 15.56 Electric Vehicle Charging Stations to the Title 15 Buildings and Constructions of the New Dunsborough Municipal Code, and that we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion of motion? And see done. Can we do a roll call vote? Or just a minute?
Councilmember Clarnow?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
Aye.
And Mayor Brian?
Also an aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
And then I'll make the additional motion to adopt Resolution 2023-01, adopting the Electric Vehicle Charging Station Checklist.
Go for it.
I'll say. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none. If we do an additional roll call vote, or just one roll call or?
Either one.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And so just to let everyone know that ordinance will be ratified and will take effect in 30 days.
All right, our next on the agenda and new business, item 11A, DPAC summary and informational update. We were given a very thorough memo. Is there a member of the DPAC committee present here? Linda was unable to make it tonight, but she sends her apologies.
Mike is here.
Would you like to?
Well, I wasn't at, after I haven't been at the last meeting since I was no longer a member of DPAC, so I think it's probably.
I can, I guess I can kind of summarize the memo.
At least for the public's benefit, yes.
Yes. So over the, over the past year, DPAC has met monthly via Zoom, has had 11 meetings in 2022. They have provided public education through seven DPAC newsletters. They worked with Councilmember Deutsch and to promote DPAC member to develop and promote the recruitment of those members. They partnered with the Fire Safe Council of Siskiyou County to successfully provide fuels mitigation and wildfire prevention activities for Dunsborough. They released, received a large four-year Dunsborough fuels mitigation project from Cal Fire. They worked with Core to harden 45 homes, promoted Zone Haven and wildfire education. They provided home hardening and defensible space training in Dunsborough. They have also collaborated on Fire Friday educational events and initiated a firewise community activities and planning. They also developed Stop the Bleed Awareness Campaign, trading, training and advocacy for Dunsborough, Mount Shasta and the region. This provided vulnerability assessments for Dunsborough, Mount Shasta schools, and developed the trainings to be completed this January. They also provided flood risk and flood preparation, national flood insurance and Zone Haven code, code red emergency information to the residents that was mailed out in October. They continued to research potential audible emergency warning systems, and they assisted with the city's green waste drop-off program. They do have a number of recommendations for staff and council to continue on. Unfortunately, as a part of this memorandum, three of the members are, their term is up this March 7th, and they are not seeking reappointment. So we are looking for recruitments to fill those positions. They would like to request the city assist with the Stop the Bleed purchasing for trauma kits for city and support staff to participate in trainings. And they asked that we continue to seek grants and resources for hazard mitigation and for staff and activities and collaborate on the Dunsborough fuels mitigation project and continue to support the efforts to become a firewise community.
Having worked with them now for about a year, when you, when you hear this, this long, long, long list of things you've done, it's just amazing that this tiny group of people have been able to do all this. And every time one of those members leaves, it's a real loss because each one has contributed so much. So I just think we all as a council should thank them for everything they're doing to help keep us safe.
Yeah, I think I definitely would move to recognize their service and contribute.
Were they asking for funding for these stop the bleed kits?
They did. We approved it.
Okay, I thought we got time.
I don't remember. I don't remember if we.
I think it was prior to your arrival.
Before me, but.
But if not, we.
Yeah, if not, I will, I'll look into that to be sure.
Week was in July.
We're also finding, trying to find other partners to work with in terms of the schools, library for the Stop the Bleed case as well.
And my understanding is the members who are stepping down would like to address the council before they, they were not able to make it tonight. All right, thank you. DPAC committee know that this was perceived by council.
Are you going to be doing any public comment or other discussion?
Information.
I think just for the members of the general public, one of the really nice things is they're requesting that we go for additional grants. And I think we should be hearing back next week if we're funded through the California Office of Emergency Services, also known as Cal OES. And we applied for their cycle two jumpstart grant to hire a full-time hazard mitigation and disaster planning coordinator for the city. We went through only one round of edits, which other cities went through several. So I'm really hopeful that the city of Dunsborough will get that position funded. It's a no-match grant, and that person would be with us full-time for five years. And so that would be paid through, through the program. And the explicit purpose of that program is for them to apply for additional grant dollars as well as do awareness campaigns, work on our green waste programs, and then provide a full-time staff report, support to the disaster planning advisory committee.
I did just receive an additional, basically a notice of funding for, from Cal Fire. They're now accepting grants through the, I believe, the end of March for up to $5 million to include up to three quarters of a million dollars towards equipment type activities to help with, you know, urban wildlife interface and the vegetation mitigation component of, you know, a lot of the work that DPAC has already done. Now they're starting to put a lot more money towards that. So I expect to be participating in that grant process.
There is another possibility that could come into the puzzle here too, and that is I think Core is still open to the idea of exploring whether they might want to come back and spend more time with us. And, you know, that would be a major upbeat for us, and so I'm hoping that comes through.
Yeah.
They made a big difference.
I would say if anyone's considering this committee, reach out to some of the, reach out to the city. I'm sure there's members on the committee or former members who'd be happy to go over what they do. The heavy lifting's been done insofar as the committee is, you know, a strong institution in this town, and you get to continue the good work.
And there's no qualifications.
I will open it to public comment. Someone would like to make it.
Yeah, Brian Wilson, 4411 Olive Street, Dunsborough. I've got the, had the opportunity to work with DPAC. And, and it was their amazing group who's done a lot to help that a lot of you guys don't see. And I get the real opportunity to see they, they supply members for green waste. They go door to door and make that event really happen. They, they, I mean, a lot of the stuff you've seen around town with fire clearance is done through grants that them and the Fire Safe Council have done over the past. So just want to say thank you to them.
All right. Thank you so much. If there's any additional public comments, please come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. See none. I'll close public comment. On the side, and we'll proceed to new business. Item B, Council Reorganization, selection of mayor and vice mayor. I will begin by explaining the procedure that we will take tonight for the mayor and vice mayor. We will start with mayor nominations and then do vice mayor separately. Any member of the council may nominate another. The person being nominated may second the nominations if they so choose. Once all the nominations are in, I will allow each nominee to give a brief statement as to why they would like to be mayor in the coming year. We will then open to public comment after each nominee has had their time. We will close both public comment and open council discussion on the mayor appointment. If there's no further discussion on the mayoral appointment, then we will vote on the nominations in the order in which they are made until a majority vote is made. After the mayor, we will move on to the vice mayor and follow the same process for nominations, statements, public comments, voting. Are there any questions? All right. Then after that, I would like to say it's been my profound honor to serve this council and the city of Dunsborough in the role of mayor. It's been a long, productive two years. We've had COVID. We've had four city managers. But I'm very happy with where we are today, very grateful for Blake Michelson's effort in getting us through that time period of interim city managers, and very grateful for Dustin Reed for taking a chance and moving his family across the country and joining us. It's been a real pleasure, and I think we can open up.
I nominate Juliana Lukeyzi.
Second. I'll say. And I'll and I'll nominate Mayor Brian to serve an additional term.
I'll say. All right, I appreciate that. Let us consider any additional nominations? Okay. Did I make a brief statement?
Sure. Thank you for the nomination. I appreciate it. I was very excited to serve for two terms or serve two years with my first election to the city council. One of the things I really want to focus on this year, and I've kind of thematically made this year for myself, a year for radical joy. That's kind of the theme. And I think one of the things that really struck me with the reelection process was one of the questions that was asked of us is, you know, about Dunsborough's history and legacy. And I really want to explore that a lot more. I want to explore our residents that we have within the city. One of the things I would really like to focus on is just as much as we have Black History Month, Hispanic History Month, I'd like to really recognize those individuals in our community. I don't think we do enough to celebrate each other as well as our history. That's good. But also talking about some of the history that's not, especially with the presence of the railroad here. And it's really brought to mind a lot of things in this past year. If you're not aware, they're doing a historic cleanup on the rail yard right now of, you know, what is it? Over 100 years of contamination that's occurred by the railroad into that area. I think we have a really great opportunity to work with the railroad on the Mossbury Falls project. We've also just recently become part of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. And so a lot of those grants for recreation, natural resources are open to us that we have not had those opportunities in the past. And I'd like to really focus on that piece. But also just again, supporting our city staff and getting everything done. We have very limited budget. We have very limited staff and kind of moving forward with that piece. And then also just again, getting more advertisement out, encouraging public comment of our residents and really working on that piece. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm very honored by the nomination as well. Kind of going where I left off, I had a lot of intentions when I imagined serving the community as mayor, my own unique style and what I'd do in that time. And we were in the middle of COVID and then city manager, you end up, you know, playing the hands of the devil, so to speak. I've always intended, and I would love to actually achieve this more so in the coming year if I serve as mayor, to take a more engaged and more hands-on approach to education and to city policy development on the city council. We've been making decisions in my time here, long before that, on all sorts of matters that we don't necessarily get the most clear understanding of. I know our unique backgrounds can give us some take on that, but I do find it sad that I've never toured the wastewater plant as an example. And I think it'd be really healthy for that to be a standard in council, even if we don't do it every year, but I'd like to lead the way that way. I would also like to do what we can to honor our citizens and achieve the low-hanging fruits. You know, we talked about it, public comment was mentioned for housing. I very much want to see our vacant units brought back online. And I know the city council will work on that whether I'm mayor or not, but I would love to achieve that and happy to work with everyone going into the future, wherever I sit.
So this is new. How do we sort this part out now with two nominations?
Normal enough.
We'll now open to.
Open this up to public comment.
So is this public comment on these two nominations?
It would be on, yeah.
Yes. Or generally on the topic of reorganization for title of mayor.
There'll be another. Somebody who's not been nominated for mayor, this public comment can't be about a nomination for somebody. Mayor is what I'm saying.
I will say it's on the topic we advertised.
Hi, Karen again. So I'm here to talk about Bruce Deutsch's post on political forum as well as Neighborhood Watch, but that post was taken down. And then a few days later, Bruce actually.
Please, I don't want to ask you again.
The Dunsborough Neighborhood Watch actually took his post down because it wasn't a political post. Instead, it was supposed to be on political forum. I'd like to read a little bit about that post.
As long as it relates to the title, to the office of mayor.
Okay.
I think that's a little confusing because there was an open time issue, but at the open time issue, you were talking about, you wanted to discuss the appointment, the possible appointment of Councilmember Deutsch to the mayor. What we're discussing now is one or two motions, and neither of them affect Councilmember Deutsch.
So I would like to go further and ask that both Dave and Bruce not be considered as candidates for any committee.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? We have two. What we're dealing with now is motions before the city council. If one of those motions come up, then that would be the appropriate time to discuss that.
I did not realize there was one for the city council members.
Pardon me.
I did not realize it was going to be another one for just city.
Well, right now we're talking, the motions deal with the mayor, and neither of them refer to Councilmember Deutsch. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. If there's any additional public comment, please come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand, and we'll be with you shortly. If there's any additional public comment, please come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand, and we'll be with you shortly.
Still Peter Arth. It was my great joy to serve the past four years with the Dunsmere City Council. And while Matthew and Juliana and I did not run together formally, we ran together in spirit to try to change this community. And you could see smart, dedicated, well-educated citizens stepping up to occupy the shoes and the seats of those who came before us, all the way back to the beginning of the city of Dunsmere. I know from the hours I've spent with them, it was very, it was an act of necessity to offload our response to the wildfires, not to the city council and its staff, because the city didn't have any staff. So we did the DPAC, and Juliana and I wrote the charter for the DPAC. We helped attract citizens, and they are praiseworthy. But going forward, either the city of Dunsmere is going to step up, realize the opportunities that it has to be the vibrant city it could be, to connect the dots or not. So I'm immensely pleased with the two nominations. I am very bullish on the future of the city for the next four years, under the leadership of whomever is chosen. The expectation of everybody in this room is you're going to work together and knock the ball out of the park. And either you will or you won't, but you certainly have the good wishes of the community, the hopes of the merchant community and our fragile economy, that this is our time. COVID is under control. We're having a beautiful winter. The ski park is open. And we need funds, we need vision, we need planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone who would like to make additional public comments?
Member of the public art. You did it, too. Sorry. It's a really bad habit.
David Hicks. I'm licensed attorney by the city of Dunsmere to practice here. But that's ending. I'm just retiring after fifty years in practice, John. Just thought I'd let you know. While our House of Representatives has completed an unsuccessful eleventh vote for election Speaker of the House, I sit here thinking how lucky we are to have two people nominated, either one of which would win on the first ballot probably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. All right, any additional public comment? Please come to the podium. If you're out there on Zoom, go to the reactions tab and hit the raise your hand button. All right, I see none. I'll close public comment, and we can proceed with council discussion.
I think regardless, just letting everyone know from members of the public, you know, we have a very lovely council. You know, regardless of who gets elected or anything, we still are here for everyone who needs any help with anything or has any projects. And so please feel free to come forward to any of us. It doesn't matter. You don't need to talk to the mayor, whoever it is. Just continue to please stay with us as we move forward.
I can just say on my end, I'd be honored to have Juliana be mayor. It has been a real honor the last two years. No further discussion. I'll call questions. If we do a roll call vote on nominating Juliana Lucchese for the term of mayor in the coming year.
Councilmember Claire Noe.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Lucchese.
I will abstain because I feel weird voting for myself. I do. It's really awkward, so I will abstain.
It's my great pleasure to vote aye.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
I think it's Mrs. Mayor. Oh, that's right. I'd like to nominate Matthew Bryan as vice mayor.
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Claire Noe.
Right, and I'll second that motion. And so we'll now open it up. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll move into statements, beginning with Councilmember Brian.
Okay, so as vice mayor, it would be my great honor to serve as vice mayor at the pleasure of city council. I will work hard to serve the good of Dunsmere, my constituents, our constituents. However, I do feel as if, if Councilman Claire Noe can experience running a meeting, too, it may prep him in this eventual road pulling the gavel on a more permanent basis. So I would be in favor of young blood coming in and experiencing.
Right, Councilmember Claire Noe.
Well, I'm just getting used to being council member, but I guess I could take the, take the leap up. Be vice mayor, be a wonderful experience to further serve the community on these meetings every once in a while. Have a little bit more involvement in the community.
All right. Seeing no other statements, I'll now open this up for public comment on the nominations for vice mayor. Seeing none, we'll now move into discussion or a vote. Is there any other discussion of the item at hand?
Call the vote.
All right, we'll begin with the nomination of Councilmember Brian to vice mayor. Wendy, could you please do a roll call vote for us, please?
Councilmember Kaiser.
No.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Claire Noe.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucchese.
How about yes? And so that is a majority, and so vice mayor stands as vice mayor Claire Noe now. So you will basically to let everyone know, we don't get paid anything. We don't get paid more. Basically, I just get to run the meetings, and if I'm not here, Vice Mayor Claire Noe can run the meeting in my stead. So thank you, everyone, for the, yeah. You'll be fine. It'll be fine. Thank you, everyone, for that item. And we will now move into our other item of the day, which I believe is eleven C, which is city committee appointments. And I'll hand it over to the city manager to introduce the item. And please be nice to me. It's been a while since I've had to run a meeting, and I'm having to remember everything going on.
That's okay. So we have a number of committee assignments. And I will just, do you want me to like go through the whole list, and then we start back at the top? For those assignments, they are on page thirty-seven of the packet. These, the first of these committees is the finance committee. It has two councilmembers on that committee. And then we have the DPAC or the Disaster Planning Advisory Committee.
So City Manager Reeve, why don't we just take them each individually at a time? So we'll introduce the finance committee.
Committee. Its charter originally stated two counselors with two-year terms. I wasn't here, and no one remembered at the time, and both, both members are expiring their two-year terms. Of course, they could reapply, but I would think it helpful if we alternate the council terms on finance again as originally intended. That being said, I'd be happy to serve on the finance committee again, especially as I will not have to spend as much attention running meetings.
And I would not like to be on finance.
Me neither.
Hey, Michael.
Well, then I move that Councilman Claire Noe joined me on the finance committee.
Well, so we have to take public comment, so I believe.
Well, can we go through them and then take public instead of doing it for each one or not?
I would like to do it for each one because I think.
Let me interrupt here. Normally, it's the role of the mayor to make appointments. The city council as a group can change that. I mean, they can, if they disagree with one of the appointments. But that's just an internal function of the, of the city council, so that, well, public can comment on it, but I mean, it's really a total function of the, of the city council, so.
I had the opportunity to read the protocols. Our protocol stated mayoral appointment with full council ratification, so.
Majority council ratification. Yeah. So I'm just going to go through, and so we are on finance, and so there is interest from Councilmember Brian. And then is it safe to say Vice Mayor Claire Noe that you're also interested?
Yes. And in the interest of alternating, I'll take the one-year term.
Okay, so what I'll do is we'll take them each as we go through, and then I'll open public comment on the item as a whole. And then we can then close into discussion and voting on the appointments. And so I'll just kind of keep track of what people are interested in at this time. So we'll move into, the Disaster Planning Advisory Committee was actually changed to a standing committee, so there is no need to assign those positions at this time. Those will be open.
I'm, I don't see my name on here, so would I still continue on as a DPAC representative?
So yeah, you could continue to attend the meetings on behalf of the city council, but you would be a non-voting member.
Oh, of course, liaison. It's always that way. Yeah, so that's what I would be here, right? Liaison.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll add that to the list.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. And so then we move into the solid waste committee. There are two councilmembers assigned, myself is assigned. And then a previous councilmember, Art, was on, so we are looking for one councilmember interested in solid waste. I would like to.
Try that.
I would like to talk about trash. I love trash. Are there any interests in solid waste? Okay. Any other interests in solid waste? Okay, cool. The next ones are the airport ad, the Airport Advisory Ad Hoc Committee is Councilmember Deutsch and myself. Councilmember Deutsch, would you like to continue?
Yes, and I'd like you to still be the chair of your.
Thank you. And anyone else interested? Airports?
Interested, but not enough to me.
All right. The next ones, I think, are more of the fight ones. If anyone would like to have fun with those, they're really, there's a, there is an assignment to the legal of local agencies, which is typically the mayor. That goes to the low law. And then we have the Siskiyou County Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority, which actually, if you remember, we assigned the primary representative to our city manager Reeve at the last meeting with myself as an alternate. That has to be done through council action for that group. We have our Dunsmere Recreation and Parks District, which is a separate process similar to DPAC.
I'd like, I'd like to bring something up there, though, because I know you, particularly Madam Mayor, have been concerned about that board and the actions there. What I would like to do is, and I know this from before, that Dave has been a real big sponsor of the pool and everything else. I'd like to appoint him as a liaison there to start building a better line of communication.
So normally I would accept that. Unfortunately, the Parks District meets on the same exact nights, at the same exact time as our meetings here.
That is, that is something I wanted to bring up to the councils, if we would consider maybe doing a joint meeting with them, maybe twice a year.
Correct, yeah.
To kind of help, to kind of help do that communication if possible.
This, this summer, we gave them homework to come back to the, we had a joint meeting. They owe us another joint meeting to go over how they're going to rectify some of the deficiencies in their lease.
Well, I noticed Katie O'Grady is on the line, is up on the line, and she's with that. But I do think that even if they could change to a different date or something, if we could find a way to get the council really working together with them, I think we could go a long way. So I'd like to look at that down the line.
Yeah, another thing that was mentioned.
So back to the item at hand, it's just committee assignments for council members, so we will bring this back at a future agenda. Thank you. CDBG Loan Committee, and for those who do not know, the CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant, which is a federal program administered through the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And this is a loan committee that helps small businesses. It's a very low-interest loan, if not no-interest loan sometimes, depending on that. These are two citizen members. I believe we used to assign council members on this, but we have since removed them due to a potential conflict of interest, because the council approves all of the final loan appropriations. So I think we're okay on CDBG Loan Committee. We'll have to confirm with our citizen members if they are still interested in that. Our next one is the Erwin, which is the Integrated Regional Water Management Group. They have a group for the Upper Sacramento River that meets on a fairly frequent basis. And I believe we have previously assigned our representative to be the city manager and/or the finance director. So Blake has been going to those. That one, we did have a council member previously on, that was Councilmember Art. And then we removed him for staff, because these meetings tend to be from nine in the morning until like two in the afternoon. So it's easier for staff members to spend that amount of time with the Erwin group. Is there any potential changes in that? Are you okay with the current staff assignment to Erwin?
I'm okay.
Okay, I see no issues here. The Collier Interpretative and Information Center.
I was the last person on there, so I could speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Basically, the Collier's information, Interpretative and Information Center is located just north of Wyrica on I-5. And it was created as part of a, what's, what's it called, the type of.
Welcome.
No, no, it's a welcoming center, but it's a type of a, where the all.
It's a joint powers.
Yeah, exactly. So the point is, is that there is a representative from each of the cities. And basically what we do is we try to make sure that as people come into the county, they get to hear about Dunsmere and things going on in Dunsmere. I was part of it, and I was overvoted at one point. I just didn't feel like there was a whole lot that I was contributing, you know, being this far south. And then Mark Rowley took over for a while, and then he had some problems and had to stop. So it's up in the air whether or not we want to continue with this, and whether we want to send somebody up there.
So, yeah, go ahead.
And it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but I just think it might be something out there to continue to look at, and particularly in coordination with the chamber. Because it used to be Richard Dindus that went before I did, so it could be a chamber member, but for right now, we don't have anybody.
So it is, and I was going to say it is important for us to send a representative, because we contribute dollars to this. And so we should probably have a representative on this board. So that is open at this time? Is there?
Do, do you want, I mean, from a staff standpoint, we could put something out and ask for applications if there's interest from the council to do that. And see if there's anybody in the community. I'll also talk to the chamber as well.
Chamber as well, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so I was, I was going to pull it back to the council as a whole. Is there any interest from a particular council member to serve on this committee? Or would we like to go back out for a general member of the public and/or a staff member?
I ain't got time for that.
Yeah.
And you have to go all the way up to the Collier Center, which is practically Oregon.
Well, a lot of it's in Wyrica, but it's Wyrica.
Yeah.
Well, good. Appreciate your time serving on it, but I can't.
Okay, so we, we will discuss out of a future meeting how we want to handle that in terms of advertisement. I just want to make sure everyone's okay on that. So, and then that brings us to our next one, which is actually should be an ad hoc committee, which is the Public Safety Committee, which is a group, two councilmembers who meet quarterly, ideally with the sheriff's office to discuss the contract and provide input on oversight of the execution of that contract. Right now, it is myself and Councilmember Brian. I'm happy staying on that.
I'm very happy staying on it. We have important work ahead of us on that committee.
Yeah, I, I believe it's important as we move into it, because it was only a one-year MOU, so.
Yeah.
I believe that's an important committee.
One point of clarification, that data is definitely not correct.
Oh.
The July first, twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
So that was some previous. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so seeing no other issues, we'll keep the current assignment. The Airport Land Use Committee is a county committee dedicated to maintaining land use surrounding all of the airports, not just Dunsmere's. I am the current representative, and we have never met. So I'll just keep doing that if you guys really want to. That brings us into our unresolved.
Madam Mayor, before we go further, that brings up a point. Shouldn't I be on there for the LTC as a representative? Because that's a county organization as well.
Oh, we did forget about the LTC. Would you like to continue serving? I assume you would like to.
Well, certainly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm on LAPCO, but I, I don't know if that's in.
That's the low law group that appoints those ones. I think we appointed you.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. So the LTC, is there any other interest, or it looks like Councilmember Deutsch is going to get that one?
Thank you.
Which is the Local Transit Commission. I'm trying really hard not to talk to acronyms. So the unresolved committees that are open for discussion at this point are the Economic Development slash Tourism Committees. We do not have a charge or consistent meeting schedule for this committee. And so Councilmember Deutsch and Councilmember Brian are assigned to those, and so I'll open it up to the two current members to kind of open that item.
You know, for me, we did meet, I think, twice in the course of the last four years. I think the, the final conclusion I feel on this committee is the, the work of economic development is very, very important to Dunsmere. We have the Economic Development Planning Grant coming up. We will be meeting and discussing it, but anything important has always kind of come straight to council. And yet another committee hasn't served it. So I do think that if, as part of the process in our economic development planning, we want a specific committee that is not the full council, happy to serve, but I would move, we remove this committee until the specific need arises. If Mr.
I'd be fine.
Deutsch has no objections.
Yeah, I'd love that. I'd like to work with you on that, because, you know, we worked together on this broadband thing, and I think I'd like to. Yeah, I'd love that. I'd like to work with you on that because, you know, we worked together on this broadband thing, and I think I'd like to continue working with you. So whenever we decide to bring it back up, that'd be great.
Okay, so at this time, we'll remove that committee. The next is the Chamber of Commerce Liaison. This is Councilmember Deutsch. Would you like to continue in that position, or is that something you'd like to kind of rework?
Well, I, I've got kind of two different ways of looking at it. On one hand, I'd like to continue, but there's another side of me that thinks that somebody like Michael might be a good person to come in, especially with the DNA he has. I know that your father was one of the key members of that for a long time, so I think that might be.
Mr. Brewfest, that's a perfect.
With the Brewfest and also, I know Matthew and I, or Councilman Bryan and I, have talked a little bit about trying to get an Oktoberfest going as well. So I would be interested in potentially.
Okay, so I'd be willing to pass on liaison to the chamber to him, and I think they'd be glad to have him. Thank you, Michael.
All right, thank you. Next is the Neighborhood Watch, which I believe Councilmember Deutsch and Kaiser were very influential in when it first began. And I believe because of COVID and a couple of other things, we kind of put this one on the back burner.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to say, just to kind of put it in perspective, I spent about three or four years coming into the council chambers here once a week with whoever was the sergeant at the time. Ben spent a lot of time with me and you during neighborhood watches. And, and it seemed to me at the end of that, before COVID came on, that we're just so much of Swiss cheese as far as the community. It really is going to take more than an effort than just having meetings. So that's one of the reasons I want to do this building Dunsmere is because I thought that would be a great time to introduce some of that information to people. So for the time being, if somebody wants to take it on, I'm fine, but I'll kind of hold it in my back pocket for a while if that's what you prefer.
Okay, we can go with your recommendation. We can just keep it on as just kind of a floater with economic development. Maybe we'll do a charter when it comes time to do that. I know one of the things, too, is the DPAC Committee, because it's kind of taken over some of the role and purpose of that Neighborhood Watch as well. So maybe there's something that we can do there. So, and then everything else is concluded. So our Short Term Rental Ad Hoc Committee is concluded, as well as our Water and Sewer Rate Study. So just to go back over committee appointments at this point, right now, we have a recommendation for finance committee for Councilmember Bryan to serve a one-year term. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Clarnow to serve a two-year term. Councilmember Deutsch to be a DPAC representative or follow those meetings and report back to us there. The Airport Ad Hoc Committee would be Councilmember Deutsch and myself. The local.
Solid Waste. Add Dave.
Oh, so, yeah, yeah, sorry. Solid Waste would be Councilmember Kaiser and myself, but also we do have the Airport Ad Hoc Committee, which is you and I.
That's next area.
The Local Transportation Commission representative for Dunsmere would be Councilmember Deutsch. The Collier Interpretive Center is open, and we would go out for a public representative and advertise. Public Safety would be Councilmember Bryan and myself. And the Chamber of Commerce Liaison would be Vice Mayor Clarnow. Does that sound correct? Okay, so I will now open this item up for public comment. If there are members of the public who would want to comment on committee appointments, as well as the committees themselves, they may feel free to do so. You'll have three minutes. And I believe Blake has our timer up here. And again, please state your name when you come to the podium.
Karen Kaiser. I am standing to offer my public input regarding the rear organization of leadership of the coming year. As you are aware of the events that unfolded last year between myself and Dave Kaiser, I was hoping it would remain out of spotlight at the public. However, it became a toxic shaming game led by Vice Mayor Bruce Deutsch, who took it upon himself to redeem and renew Dave's image using his title for influence, which I believe is not in the pub, in the public best interest and not, is not the business city of Dunsmere. I'm at. I'm asking that both Dave and Bruce not be considered as candidates for any assignments. I know, I know both of these considerations have large impact, impacts for the workload in the council, but will be easily tasked to carry out. That is why I suggest revisiting the topic in four to, four to six months, depending on their behavior. And the council is most importantly, the city's needs. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Madam Mayor and Members, Peter Art, I have two. One is with regard to the Airport Advisory Ad Hoc Committee. If you look at the purpose of that committee, it says to consider and review all activities of Mott Airport, including the feasibility of municipal solar farm or public slash private partnerships of same new business park. And for the last four years I served on the council, all it was ever about was private aircraft and a runway and FAA grants. Our auditors pointed out, we know that the airport is an enterprise fund, is not a big moneymaker for the citizens of Dunsmere. So when in the world is this committee ever going to start to look at the potential for making that property that we inherited from the county more useful and profitable as we move into the electric world and the electric economy? I hope the charter actually is effectuated starting next month. My other comment is it's absolutely counterintuitive to shut down a committee on economic development and tourism. I mean, it wouldn't make sense to anybody that's governing a small city in Siskiyou County. But if that's your decision, okay. What I would suggest is you start an ad hoc committee on affordable housing. And that the ad hoc committee have two members of the city council, two members of the planning commission. You meet once a month with the city manager and the city planner. And you start to talk about both the vacant housing problem and hand in hand the future of the historic district. If Ron McLeod was able to stand here, he would repeat his testimony from twenty fourteen that the historic district has suffered under the current arrangement of two members of the planning commission being designated as historic district representatives. They have no power, they have no mandate, nor does the planning commission. And as a consequence, when you walk down Dunsmere Avenue through the historic district, you see what you see.
Thirty seconds.
Why wouldn't you make that better? So if you want to ditch economic development tourism, go ahead. But I would ask you make an equal or greater effort around the future of the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on committee assignments or committees? And members of the public on Zoom may go to the reactions tab and raise their hand if they would like to also make a comment at this time. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and go into discussion.
I do want to follow up. I like that idea. So I'd like to explore that if anybody else does.
Okay. So again, we have talked about this previously with committees. When we first got on about four years ago, we had like thirteen committees, none of which had meeting schedules or mission statements or anything like that. So I would strongly suggest using the templates that we have to make sure that we, when we create a committee, it's very clear what the purpose of that committee is and what the membership would look like. So I encourage any council members who are interested in a topic area and would like to create that committee to, to use that as a template, and we can schedule it at a future agenda item.
We have an expert in creating these charters, and you don't we?
We're, we're getting there. Anyway, are there any other comments or questions on the committee assignments? Otherwise, I will transfer this list over to the clerk, and we will circulate this so everyone can take a look at it. It didn't look like we had any, so I will now close this item. So that will conclude our new business for the evening. Sorry, the agenda on here. And that'll move us into item number twelve, which is future agenda items. Future agenda items are topics brought to the city council for review and/or action. All dates refer to the first introductions and can be altered as time and priority levels are there. Councilmember Kaiser.
Yeah, I really like what Peter was saying and concur with Bruce about the ad hoc housing. Housing ad hoc. I'd like to bring that back and talk about it. I'd also like to talk about. I'd also like to talk about snow removal on Siskiyou Avenue and the policy. There are no polls, there are no signs posted.
So again, for future agenda items, they're not up for discussion, but we can request.
I'd like to bring that back to, and I'd like to have Paul Reader there from base if possible, ask some questions.
All right, so per our protocols, council members do need a second to place items on the agenda. And so Councilmember Deutsch has basically seconded the housing ad hoc. Is there a second for a discussion at a future agenda, as on a future meeting agenda for snow removal policies?
I would second that with just a simple idea that we live in a, a community where we're always looking south, wanting to bring in all kinds of new people south of the city. And those people don't have sidewalks, they have things just like Siskiyou Avenue. And, and so the whole point is, is that we.
So again, it's, if you're seconding, you can just say second, but we're gonna, we're, we're gonna save discussion for a future meeting. Thank you.
Clear, it's not like, yeah, yeah, I second that.
All right, are there any other future agenda items?
Member.
Yes.
I guess for, for one, I was brought to my attention by a chance meeting that moss spray is entering kind of a new phase. And you clarified some of my questions based on that chance encounter. But I think it would be wise for the council to maybe reconvene how we want to formally address council involvement in the betrayal, particularly if real estate negotiations are involved. I'd love to be given the charter to maybe help with that.
Who do we have working moss spray right now?
Juliana.
Yep.
Could Dave join him on that?
So again, we're not up for discussion, but I'll second that. We have been talking about the Moss Spray Falls project and what's going on with that. So we can bring an update at a future agenda meeting.
Madam Mayor, I forgot something.
Okay.
It seems to me that we used to rotate on the agenda. This week, this week would be this council member and, and the city manager, and next week would be another.
For the pre-agenda meetings.
Yeah, I'd like to get back, I think that's in the protocols. I'd like to get back to that because it hasn't been that way in quite some time.
Yes, it's been a little bit. So we'll put that on. That's not really a future agenda item for discussion. My understanding, too, is we have some city council protocol updates, speaking with Councilmember Bryan about that. And so we will bring council member protocols at a future agenda. Are there any other future agenda items from the council members? So I'm going to open up, I will be requesting two council items for the next meeting. And again, there is no discussion on the items at this time, and I understand that this may be a little bit controversial, but I've prepared two memos and two proposed resolutions for censure of Councilmember Kaiser and Councilmember Deutsch concerning activities with city staff and fellow council members. And so I'll be placing that on the next agenda. I will send the memos and the proposed resolutions after this meeting to the city manager so he can disseminate that ahead of time. That, those will be the items that I'll be presenting at the next meeting on the item. And so just to understand that I have prepared those for the next meeting.
What sort of defense will be allowed?
You can submit whatever you would like for it, as long as it's, again, pertaining to the item. So you can address it as fully as you'd like and provide any supplemental materials to city staff for the agenda. So, are there any questions?
I have a second, bud.
All right, seeing none, we'll move into adjournment. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Our next meeting will be in two weeks. Our next meeting date.